Jimmy, let me know whenever you're ready.
Okay.
You ready?
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you all to this January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Hard to believe, two thousand twenty-three, one agenda says two thousand twenty-two, so I was a little confused. Two thousand twenty-three, meeting City of Charleston Planning Commission. I'm Charlie Carriss, I'm the chairman of the commission, joining the commission today are Ms. Sunday Lampisus, Ms. Donna Jacobs, Ms. Erica, I'm sorry, Erica is not here, Ms. Lita Bryant Jenkins, and Ms. McKenna Joyce. So we've got a call, and we'll probably get started, or Vice Chairman, Ms. Sillasane, is delayed, maybe you hear, but it's delayed for now. The way we'll run the meeting is I'll introduce an item into the agenda, and we'll ask staff to present on that item, then we'll ask the applicant to speak, and then we'll ask anybody who favors the application to speak, anybody in opposition to the application to speak, then we'll give the applicant an opportunity to rebut anything that was said, or have some final words. We don't have a big crowd today, so I don't think we'll have a lot of back and forth conversation, but again, we'd ask you to be as brief as you can, we don't, we want everyone to speak, but please be as brief as you can. If you have a cell phone, I'd ask you to turn it on silent, and I'd ask Mr. Morgan to introduce any staff that's presented today, and any changes to the agenda.
And, Mr. Chairman, we don't have any changes to the agenda, but I am Christopher Morgan, planning manager at the city. Also helping today with the meeting will be Lee Bachelder, our zoning administrator. Jim Hemphill, our planner, is here with us, setting this thing up. My manager, my location coordinator, is here for the zonings. Philip Overcash is here, and then Philip Clapper is our clerk, and I think that's all of our planning divisions there.
Okay, great. So the first item on the agenda is number one, rezonings, six fifty-seven, six sixty-one, sixty?
We're gonna do the short-term rental.
Oh, I apologize. So we'll go ahead and get our dates from the staff on short-term rentals, which we asked for, thank you. Thank you. Do you hear me okay?
I'm Dan Richeo, I'm the Director of Livability and Tourism. I'll introduce, for those who don't know, Deputy Director, Amy Sutherland, who is also a planner who I stole from the Hine Department to help me out with mobility. So I'm here just to give you a brief update of our status with the short-term rental, our enforcement, our progress.
And I don't mean to interrupt, you've been with the city a good while, and you went an enforcement vote, you're following.
Yeah, yes, sir. Started my career in nineteen eighty-eight with the police department. I retired from the police department as a lieutenant in twenty-ten, and I came over to planning as the Director of Livability, and now we have morphed into the Department of Livability and Tourism.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Next slide, please, and it'll be pretty great, but just a quick overview, as you all know, the enforcement began in August of twenty eighteen, and at that time, we hired full, three full-time enforcement officers. We had a big job to do, a lot of my hands, we were all new active enforcement, it's a brand-new ordinance, so we kind of hit the ground running with many resources we could be candidate. They focused full-time on enforcement of rentals. Now, also, the strongest component of our ordinance is that merely advertising without a permit is a violation. So that's pretty easy to prove, right? But you have to have the information available from those sites that are advertising to prove that the individual either has a permit, or does not. We require that an individual place in their unit for short-term rent to post the city permit number on their advertisement. So we utilize a software which may, some of you may have heard, it's a short-term rental, Granicus product, and it's a company that actually, just about every municipality in town around Charleston uses this same company. They're very reputable, and we have had much success with their programs. And what they do is they monitor, their staff monitors, all rental platforms twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. And there's not just a couple, your V R V O and Airbnb, right? There's hundreds, hundreds of rental platforms out there. So how do they obtain the information on these websites? What they do is they specialize in software that has API capabilities for extracting the information. API is a very, Texan, the other word is, application programming interface. So what this software does, and these people do, is, for example, when you go to a V R V O site, or a site to rent a property, you're seeing certain amounts of information. This software goes behind the scenes, it's extracting information you and I cannot see. It supplies that information to us in report form, so that information is addressed, the information on the property, photographs, all the information that we need to start the case. I knew early on going into this that we would not rely solely on a third party handing us information and us taking it to court and prosecute. That was not gonna happen. What we do is we merely take the information they give us, and we expand on that with a full investigation of each and every case that the officers and that they investigate. So they receive the information, and they start from scratch. They corroborate all the information that is given to them from the company. We check city records, county records, state records. We make sure that the information they give us on the property is correct, the owner information is correct, all of it's validated. My guys also use social media platforms and information corroborating the activities within the short-term rentals. So we build that case from scratch based on what that preliminary information was given to us. So when the officers follow up, they build their case, they spend time on it, they go to the office. Every, every case we get, there is a site visit by the officers. They're looking for information or photographs to make it of short-term rentals. They're looking for combination lots on your, your front doors, which commonly in residential areas you do not have. They, they know what time checkout time and check-in time is, and they look for the maids and the cleaning services that comes to the locations, clean the apartment or whatever the unit is. So they're taking photos, and they're building that case as well. So the first line of notifying the owner is to give them a warning cease and desist letter. That letter goes to every individual that's attached to that property. So you could have a man, a leasing agent, if you will, a host, as they support you, the owners of the property, whether it's husband, wife, whatever, all the individuals receive the cease and desist letter. We're not required to do that, but we try to seek compliance before we have to go into prosecution. So we always give everybody a fair shake to do the right thing. Those who don't do the right thing, we go to the next step, and we issue a summons. Now, we always have to hand-deliver these summonings. So you ask, how are you gonna hand-deliver in California, New York? You deal with property governors all around the United States. So what we do is we hire local process servers in those communities. We supply them with a packet that sealed all the information regarding that case, that the offense, they're advised, and the summons is in that packet. The process server serves it, they send us an affidavit, it's a legal service, and it's valid in court, and it ends up in court. So what we do is, we have the front money up front, right? People ask, you're paying a lot of money, it's not, it's not cheap, but we do, but what also, we recruit all the money as we spend on the process servers when we go to court, and it's adjudicated, whether it's guilty, whatever the, the avenue, they have to pay restitution to the City of Charleston. So we recruit those monies for the process server. So that's been very successful. So we have been so successful, in my opinion, that we now have two full-time officers instead of three. We have utilized a third resource for other code enforcement duties to agree to have a pretty good handle on managing cases. A few stats I'll give you. So active permits to date right now, we have five hundred and fifty-eight that are permitted to the city. My officers have issued six hundred and seventy-nine citations to date. We have prosecuted six hundred and sixty-seven of those cases with court fines of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We have issued eight hundred and twenty-seven warning letters, so you see there is compliance with those numbers. And what we weren't tracking at the beginning, but over time, we started tracking the number of houses through our direct enforcement that we were turning back to the housing stock. So we researched the ones that prosecuted and determined that properties were sold, went from short-term rental to long-term rental, so there's, we calculated two of those to date. So we're pretty proud of that number, but again, we weren't looking for that statistic upfront, but we are doing that now. That's basically it. I, there was a Channel Five story on short-term rentals, which, everybody's in Channel Five, yeah, I don't wanna offend anybody. There was information that I relayed to them that did not match what I relayed to them. It made it look like there were thousands of advertisements out there, when in fact, it's, it's not. Many, many advertisements, but those, those numbers are skewed because the, you can have one unit being advertised on many, many different sites, so that makes it look like all these advertisements, they're just the one unit. The other factor that comes into play are hotels. Hotels are short-term rentals, and they, they pop up on these sites as well. So we differentiate from that. It's not, we're not where we were when we began, and that was, as you all know, it was really bad, and it was very controversial, and it was top of everybody's complaint in the community's quality of life issues. But now, we've got it to a point that we get very, very few complaints now. And that mean that it never stops. People are very savvy, they've come up, they're almost, I won't go into that detail, but they get very savvy on how to circumvent the system. And they will take their ads up, bring them down, to try to, to throw us off, but we normally catch up to them and are able to prosecute them. So with that said, that's our update, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, commission members, any questions?
Any sense of breakdown by region in your work, like somebody on the Peninsula versus Jamestown?
There's a lot of questions, and I know West Ashley did a lot more.
That's a good question. We can break it down, yeah, we can do that, we have not done that, apparently a lot of them, on West Ashley and downtown, and, yeah, we can do that.
Something sometimes impacting the urban environment, the short-term rentals, different, a little bit different or perceived differently than the suburban environment, so it might be nice.
That's good.
And whether the S T R is in the main house, or in an accessory dwelling unit, or an accessory unit, is there any way trying to add information to it?
Any other questions, commission member? We appreciate your work, I mean, I know this, I remember, we all remember when this started, and the obstacles, and the lampisus, and we went through a lot of obstacles, and ordinance, and everything else, anything we can do as this goes on, please let staff know if we need to tweak anything. We'd love, you know, help you as much as we can with changing laws and rules, make sure it's easier for you to make everybody in compliance.
Just a second, excuse me, a second, to how many active S T Rs there are, no cap?
There's no cap at this point.
As long as you have the zone.
We are looking at that from time to time, but I just.
And you said the citations are down, and so.
Citations are, the, the rule of thumb with the judge, Judge Mullins, our deciding judge in Livability Court, the fines, we usually get a maximum fine of a thousand eighty-seven dollars. We have had multiple tickets to one location because they just don't, they receive, much of them. We've had individuals walk out of court paying sixteen thousand dollars in fines, and it's, it makes an impact.
And if they don't, they put a lien on the property, I promise you.
Just to make sure that I heard this correctly, even if the court case goes in their favor, the city is still recouping, writing to adjudicate?
No, not to adjudicate the case, we recoup the cost of the process server. They have to serve them out of state or out of town, but we, I can tell you right now, I would say we have a hundred percent conviction rate, but what we do is like in any court case, right? If they, just about every single case that we have, they will, they will hire an attorney. And if they have multiple cases in any case or any defendant, they plead, right? So we do make agreements with people, if they plead to a certain amount, we will null and cross the others. So have we lost one? We haven't lost a case per se, but we have.
You settled it.
We have plea bargained to lower the amount of fines in cases against them, but we achieved, I'm saying, retirement, so you're right.
When you were talking about the methodology you are using with the API, that's, I guess, it's a doubt or request back, is it just going to us, to the major outlets or major portals, or are we also looking at even like our home room portals?
Home room too.
Okay.
It tracks everybody.
Okay, because it, because, and how you, is it, how is it identifying like the ones that made, like the new ones, or like the site-specific ones?
That, that's the, the computer grooming people, I, I can't per se tell you, but I can say that they do all the identification for us, and they are the ones gathering the information. And you have more sites and mom-and-pop sites that they capture, they capture. Anything that goes on that web, they capture.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so it's, it's outside of the whole, so you can like just be one, one-off.
Yeah, great.
Let's go.
I'm curious, when you're reviewing this, and you, I know you're very curious, is there a, a way of looking at the four percent, six percent assessment? And y'all, that's part of a process?
Part of the process, where it's four percent, six percent. We've had some, we've had several cases with married couples having two houses at two four percent, and so it's each one, and one stayed in the other, unfortunately.
How does somebody keep up with that?
Well, when it gets to us, we report that to Charleston County, or M A.
So you can work.
Oh, yeah. And there's one gentleman in the audience, if you got a question, we'll take you, but just tell us who you are and your address, if you would.
Sure, my name is Ryder, and I own the Zero Territory Hotel here, and I also have properties in Charleston, Virginia, with East Porter Group. I'm the Director of Business Development with East Andrews over there. And I was actually here for something else, just sitting in on this meeting. And I used to take part in the short-term rental task force meetings, was that my team when this first launched them? And I just bought our first home this past year in March on Lawrence Street, by the Citadel there. I was here for some questions about that, but I'm interested to understand the short-term market as well. My question is regarding the zones of the short-term rentals, has there been any additions or subtracts from those zones? Or are those sort of things in place?
They're fixed in place, it's three different zones where we have one, two, and three categories, as you can say. They're fixed, and we haven't had any need to change them.
Great. If there's no other questions, we're gonna thank Mr. Richeo for your work, and thank you, and let us know what we can do to help you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Long rezonings, number one, six fifty-seven, six sixty-one, sixty-three, six sixty-three, King Street, Canterbury, Alabala, Venezuela, C M S number four six zero zero four oh four oh nine oh, oh nine one, oh nine two, approximately forty-one acres. Request rezoning, six-story, Old City Height District, west portion, and four-story, Old City Height District, east portion, the five-story, Old City Height District. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah. So this is a property that is along Upper King Street, on the western side, just north of Line Street, which is right here. It is immediately adjacent to the September Clark Cross Town Expressway, as it goes elevated above King Street and merges into I twenty-six. At present, these are the lines of the height districts here. So you've got a four-story district along this portion of King Street, for about fifty feet in or so on both sides, and about twenty-five feet in down here, and then to the rear, you've got a six-story district. And the request is, and I'll show you some subsequent maps, is to take some of that to the four-story area, to the five-story, and some of the six stories back to the five-story. So we will go through the maps that we've got. So this is, you've modified a little bit what we've been given by the applicant, so we can demonstrate a little bit further here. But this is the portion of the site here, from behind this twenty-foot line, that they would like to go from the four to the five-story in here, and keep it as four-story for the first twenty feet. And then at the back, there are three parcels that are involved. They would like to go from the six that they currently have to five, so that's kind of like we give back in exchange for getting some more up at the front. In our city plan, this is in our city centers, and so that's one of the reasons it has better and greater heights here, is because it is part of our city center. So from a city plan standpoint, this request is, is right in line. And this is just our description that we always have about the types of development you see in city centers, and it's the most intense development that occurs in the city. Here's our aerial image of the site, it's an undeveloped property at present, and it is gravel lot. There are some historic structures across the street, and structure to the south. A new development is coming in here on this corner lot, and then the posted courier is Courier Square Phase Two, who's down here. We'll be showing you some images from that in just a minute. And then to the north, it's a new five-story building that has recently been constructed, office building on the area of King Street that is between the two overpasses from the September Clark Parkway. This is a street view, and the corner of Line Street is over here, this is a historic structure, and then the subject properties are here, right up against the overpass, and you see the five-story building in the distance, and some older historic structures on the right. And again, to show this image, but just as a reminder of what the request is. And then, this is a little bit broader image, and this gives you a sense of what's happened along this section of King Street. We have a section that goes up to six stories at the corner here, and this was a little bit of an anomaly. This was a rezoning that happened probably seven or eight years ago. And then more recently, you all saw a request to this four-story district extend to five stories right here at this new building that is, it's recently been in the media, because it's a new assisted living facility that's gonna be here. The design is kind of reminiscent, reminiscent of the old Whorfen House, and they have a entry porte-cachere here, and they wanted to have two wings came out to emphasize that porte-cachere. And so they were giving a little bit more height in those locations there for five stories. And then you have a building that just went through B A R, designed by Christian Satiel of Savannah, that is a seven-story structure, that did keep the twenty-five-foot setback. It's four stories here, and then it goes up to seven once you get to twenty-five feet back on the site. And there's also another posted courier, Courier Square Phase Two Building here, that needs a five-story structure here, and honors the twenty-five-foot setback here. And then we go at present to the fifty-foot setback in this location, and across the street is also the fifty-foot setback. So everything can go up to four stories to these locations, and then on the eastern side, you can go eight. On the western side, you go up to these various heights of seven, seven, or six, or six here. Our recommendation is for approval on this request, but we feel like that rather than twenty-foot setback from King Street, we should honor the twenty-five-foot setback. So again, just to remind you, right now, it's a fifty-foot setback, so we're saying going down to twenty-five feet, like the rest of this block here, makes sense to us, but we'd like to see it at twenty-five to match this portion of King, rather than go down to twenty. Not a huge difference, but just a little bit of one, but otherwise, we're supportive of the extra height here in front, up to twenty-five feet to the back of King Street, and then in the rear, or you can drop that from the six-story to the five-story back there. So though, with that one caveat, we are in support of the request, and then we have some slides here from the applicant that will also give you a better sense of the area, and I'll let the applicant kind of explain these.
Okay, wait, Mr. Bello?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cameron. So I'm Eddie Bello, with Bello Gas Architects, also, this is my client, Mr. Bill, and attorney. A couple things you have, so thank you, Christopher, could you go through? So the reason we're asking for this, if you look at the very first slide that shows the height difference, it effectively cuts our site in half, six stories in the back, four. We could get the building to work if we had to, but it makes for a very inefficient floor plan, and also, frankly, very bad architecture to have a sort of compact like that. So again, as Christopher has explained, we're, we're lowering the height down to five, and bringing it up to five, so that it makes more efficient floor plate. It also takes away what I think is inappropriate height in the back of the site, more in the neighborhood. All the buildings back there, to me, doesn't make as much sense with all this smaller structures of all the houses there. Next slide. And a couple things, you can skip this, this is pretty much what Christopher showed. So if you, if you do look at what's been approved recently, what Christopher said, Christian Satiel designed, actually, they have a five, they got approved by B A R for a five-story structure up on King. And then it steps back when it gets to six, seven floors. So you've got a full five stories along King right there. So we feel like the height is warranted along King in this part of the city. We've got some of the things that Christopher said, there are already taller buildings approved, and they're right next to the highway. Next slide, just kind of shows the, how this would work. So obviously, this is the one that's supposed to look like the orphanage, I think.
Yes.
This one's supposed to look like the orphanage, anyway. One of those is supposed to look like an older building, but you can see the massing that's already been approved for King, and then already built the highway, and what we're asking. And I understand the request to be a little more consistent with that IP. Yeah, I think we get that to work, the reason why I said twenty-five, it's a very small lot, and we're trying to maximize as much as we can, gotta get B A R, yeah, the actual one beats pretty good, the setback on that size lot, so that's the job.
So you're requesting that we keep it at the app of what you requested, the twenty versus twenty-five?
Because I think, again, I understand the city trying to say let's make it consistent, but really, it's not, because what they have here is already five full, and it's right at five, and then they step back twenty-five, that's six foot. That's not really, I'm honest, it's not really relevant.
And I will say, I talked to Lawrence Courtney about that today. He said B A R approved four stories and then a twenty-five-foot setback.
All the drawings.
Yeah.
They have, because we did, that's how we made this, and I looked at it, it's actually five foot four, so I'm going to count three. Straight out to five foot, and then setback.
Commission members, any questions, Mr. Bello?
I have one question, I mean, I've been giving and taking, and it's fine. My concern is just a five-story, I know it's not a large lot, but it's just hard to make a five-story square building interesting.
Right.
And I know I'm not, we're not the B A R, and, and I just, that's my concern, that that's not gonna make that building. I mean, I'm tired of these buildings being built that are square and unattractive.
Your creatures are quiet.
I know, I figured.
So, well, first of all, it won't be five stories up on King, it'll be four stories up on King, and then the setback, so, but I totally agree. We don't want it to be anything like that, I don't want it, I'm not the design, so it's okay.
That's gonna be your job to make it, you know, but.
Absolutely, but I, again, I think, remember, up on King is number four. But again, I think remember up on King is number four. I think one thing, and I don't know what the other applicant said, you know, down here, I don't know. But remember, we are lowering the back of the property.
And I like that.
To a full story. That's, you know, we feel like that's a pretty.
I was, my simple comment was just the squareness of it.
Excuse me, we know that we're going to.
I have a question. This goes back to like 12 years ago, to little tiny houses right beside your building.
Yes.
What's the height on that one?
Well, you can kind of see, it's pretty small. Yeah, you know, there's a, there's a building, I haven't seen it yet. You can see this, this historic has been severely altered. Really, this is not original and this is all king.
Yeah.
I'm saying we've got, you know, it is scale of what's there. That's going to be something we're going to do with the V A R, how do we mitigate? We don't want us to tower over that. Good is something going on, so it won't affect it. But that's, we've got the back. The new building here, it's not huge, but it'll be also taller. I guess.
There should be stories.
Yeah, I think it should be stories.
I think it's two and a half for three.
And that house, and that house sits right on the, well, I know. Yeah, I know that one. Because it's right on the, on the, I mean, clearly, you know, the door onto the sidewalk.
One thing that doesn't matter to you guys too much, it matters to the presentation groups that we have and don't see any other here, they're in support or not in opposition, which is important. We have told them and it's true, we're not going to ask for this.
Any other questions, Mr. Bello? Anyone who would like to hear in favor of the application? Anyone in opposition to the application? Close the public aspect out. Commission members, questions, comments? I guess the big question is setback.
I'm looking for what?
With?
With, well, wait, okay, let's talk about 20 to 25. It is a small lot, I mean, and.
Well, I guess the question, and I guess I should have asked this, Eddie, can you live at 25 feet? I mean, I think the building could work at 25 feet, probably, probably. You're good.
Honestly, I can't, I mean, I got my client sitting next to me. I think, you know, and so it all comes down to design. I'm not saying that we're going to have a straight shot across this 20 feet. If we get the 20, but it might go in and out, terraces, these are, you know.
Yeah, I think Mr. Bello answered earlier that he would rather have the 20.
Right, right. Works better.
I, and I hear you. And I, and I think my struggle here is the way that corner is shaped. And because where the overpass, like that's, the overpass to me is like the demarcation line between, between how that, how the city has been carved up historically. And so that little tiny building is kind of that like little outlier. And I think that's, I think that's my struggle with your 20 versus 25. And then I get the, because yes, you're right, those couriers were right there on the other corner. But then there's nothing on, it's just vast parking space. It was blank, it's a blank canvas. And so I struggle with the 20 versus 25 because you've, because of where that overpass is and how it created that, that kind of almost blight almost on that area for such a long time. And you see the things that are progressing, but then at the same time, you've got these houses on the north side and where you are.
Other comments, motions?
I would like to echo this because I drove that area and just looked at those lots. And across the street, everything is low profile across the street. Even when you get down to where the dayry is, the businesses there, they're all very low profile. So we're going to have one side of the street super high with consideration to the back. And then the opposite side of the street is all low profile. And I remember Ms. Lembis is one time saying she was getting very concerned with how we're tunneling these main cars, King and Me, that we're tunneling. So I'm struggling too.
I mean, if the 20 feet would help to make more interesting architectural features to that, then that would work for me, you know. But when we, but we're not, again, we're not V A R.
Right.
And so we have to decide the, I mean, we have to assume the worst. Not that's, please don't say that.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah, we use the close, but we'll let you, one more thing.
The only thing I would add is, remember, we're not asking to raise the height only. I think, I think that's part of our, our ask to go a little more than that. Is there a 25-foot setback kind of 20?
And I think they're giving up more of that six feet, if I'm not, from what it looks like, you're giving up more in the six feet than you are in anyone that appears to be.
Is there a motion from the commission members?
I had a, I had a move for, I've moved for it to be as applied.
So as applied, which means?
With the 20 feet, yes.
With 20 feet, okay.
Can I make a motion to go with the city recommendation with the 25-foot setback?
Just one second.
Okay.
Hold on one second. So Ms. Lembis has made a motion to go 20 feet, correct?
Not so easy, a second or an amendment.
Yeah, so the second or, a second or they will take a vote on it, on amendment. Is there a second to Ms. Lembis's motion? Okay, okay. So Ms. Joyce going to second Ms. Lembis's motion. Another discussion, a vote on that motion. For Ms. Lembis's motion, I mean, if it's defeated, then we can go with, you know. All in favor of Ms. Lembis's motion, which would be as the applicant applied for with the 20-foot setback, signify by saying aye. Aye. Raise hands, so there's three all opposed. Three, so that motion is defeated? And so do you have a second?
I make a motion to accept the city's recommendation with the 25-foot setback.
Okay. There's a motion to accept the city's recommendation, which would have the 25-foot setback. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Motion by Miss Brian Jenkins, second by Miss Harrison. You have a discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, so we have six in favor.
Yeah, I'm.
And none opposed. We know you're going to make a beautiful building in this, okay? Going to 25, we know you're going to do good work.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is number two, 200 Magnolia Road, Carolina Terrace West, T M S number 418 300164, approximately 0.23 acres, residential, single-family S R two, the single-family residential S T R. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you. So this is in the Carolina Terrace area, very near the Avondale District. This is Magnolia Road coming out of the Avondale District. And Lilandra Avenue is a parallel street. And this is a lot that runs between those two lots, those two streets. It's about a quarter of an acre lot. It's currently zoned S R two. And the request is to have the S T R, single and two-family residential so that the applicants could have some more options for development on the property. In our city plan, it is showing as suburban. And suburban is essentially, you know, a good bit of the, our suburban areas of the city. And it's typically four dwelling units an acre to eight dwelling units an acre. The request would be slightly above that. This is a comparison chart, S R two at present, 7.3 units an acre. If you went to S T R, theoretically, you could do up to 9.7 units an acre. I don't think on quarter acre lot, you're going to end up with multiple units, but multiple, multiple units. But, you know, a couple of units may end up there. The applicant can speak to that too. But when our staff looked at that difference, you know, we felt it wasn't too extreme to recommend for the S T R. And so we are recommending for that request. Just to show a couple of images, this is the existing. Sorry?
Do you have an actual image of the picture of the lot?
Yes, yes, we'll have the street view in just a second. This is a picture aerial from the here and vacant area to the rear. And here's a view from the street on Magnolia. And I believe we've got one from Lilandra. This is from Lilandra, that's the lot. And again, it's vacant on the side of the lot. And so.
Christopher, what have they made of order the houses?
S R two on either side, and then you go into county zone.
Single family or duplex?
I believe those are single-family houses on either side.
A lot of those are still in county.
You are over here at the corner of Alderman Avenue and Magnolia. So it does change. And you also have a limited business down here where there, I believe this is the bank seller. So you get into that Avondale area over here. So it's pretty close to the kind of diverse zoning of Avondale two.
I'm just curious, with the lot, I'm sorry. Oh, I was just saying that, and I know we still don't depict exactly, but it sure does look like that one house is awful close to the line, setback line on the right of the lot. I mean, I'm just kind of curious that the way that the housing, I would say, oh, no, they're all single family, no duplexes.
I'm just curious, since you were asking about what's.
I'm just, yeah, what, the setback.
There are a few, as, not a care, but there are a few duplexes, five duplexes. Called, pardon, right here, there are some S T R zoning on this lot here. And there's actually one that was fairly recently rezoned, maybe last year, year before, I think, S T R. But you need to buy this lot, of course, in front of Magnolia and Lilandra. Of course, you got commercial all of it, a big, deep lot. It wasn't quite big enough to subdivide, you know, to be a lot. But it also wasn't tall enough that it would be out of character really, really. You know, kind of referred, tried to use a little wedge, and then it expands out. It was just, it was more of a typical single-family pattern.
Staffs in favor of that, correct? Chris is in. Is the applicant with us? Come on up, sir. Tell us if you would like to say anything, we'd love to hear from you. Tell us who you are. Either way, you can talk from there, that's fine.
Thank you, I'm not much of a public speaker. Actually, I'll just walk to it because I can point to it. But you can see.
Tell us who you are, if you would, just for the record. Give us your name.
John Stanford Jennings Kerr, I go by Jennings Kerr.
Okay, thank you.
I am the homeowner, this is my wife right here joining me. It's a very unique property. I like the building, the back part of it. It already has a driveway apron here, and all the utilities are in the right of way, water, gas, sewer. And there's a power pole already in the corner of my lot there to allow for all the utilities there. Like the gentleman said, it's just small enough, I can't subdivide it, but it is large enough to be, could be an S T R, single-two-family residential. That's about it.
Right. Well, thank you for coming to be with us tonight.
Thank you. I didn't know, this is my first time in the meeting, so I don't know.
You did a good job. Does anyone like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in opposition to the application? That'll close the public aspect out. Commission members, Ms. Jacobs?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved for approval for this application, I'll tell you why. I walk this area almost every day, well, not every day, but a lot. And this is what I call a planning commission tour that I take people on because this street, Magnolia, meaning from Avondale all the way to Sycamore, is just a beautiful example of how diversity can exist in a residential area. This is part of Carolina Terrace, it was built by the Ravine Hill family back in the forties. And so it's built long for annexation, so you'll see all kinds of things in there. You see a lot of duplexes, you see a lot of single-family residents with garage, things over the garages already. This, the backside of that lot sits right behind maybe the veterinary service or the.
Gerald's.
Gerald, not Gerald's.
I mean, Parson.
Parson, yes. It's backing up right to the commercial area. So if this applicant could build something that wasn't an S T R, but maybe an affordable housing or payable housing rental for this area, this would be a great opportunity because there's everything from almost sex-free housing to multifamily housing. If you go just further down the street, you're going to hit the concourse. So it's a great example of the missing metal that we're missing and why we should be leaning it because this whole area is commercial, needs a lot of housing for people that work in the restaurant. Artists and stuff, it's nature. I think this is an opportunity.
So Ms. Jacobs?
Oh, I'll second Ms. Jacobs.
Ms. Jacobs, for proof, Ms. Jacobs is second. Other comments? All in favor of the application?
No, 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 I would second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six, all, any opposition? Those are six in favor, none opposed to us. Thank you, you did a beautiful job. Thank you.
I just want to say your name, Mr. John Stanford Jennings Kerr. I just wanted to say it.
I thought it was two people. So we're going to go into zonings. Before I do that, I want to recognize Mr. Rick Teroux from the mayor's office. It's always good to have you with us and glad you're with us. So zonings, Mr. Morgan, can we take? First of all, we got five zonings. The young lady did a beautiful job. We wanted 10, but we got five. We wanted 10, but we got five, she's not here, but that's all right. Mr. Morgan, can we take any of these together?
Yeah, if you want to take the first three together, those are all S R ones.
Number one is 35 Riverdale Drive, Avondale, West Ash, T M S number 418140063, 0.28 acres. Zoning of S R one, those are four in the county. Number two is 16 10 Point Center Road, Park Crash Gardens, West Ash, T M S number 35112011, 0.25 acres. Request zoning of S R one, it was a single-family residential in the county. And number three is 222 Island Drive, Edgewater Park, West Ash, T M S number 349140021, 0.9 acres. Request zoning of S R one, it was R four in the county. So you didn't hear me, but we got five here. We wanted 10 zonings, but we got five. No, no, I know you, we appreciate it. The more we bring in the city, we like that, so. Mr. Morgan, you go ahead on those three.
Yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, you've pretty much given all the info. And S R one is what's recommended in all three of these. And they were all single-family in Charleston County, so that's what we've approved.
Anyone want to be heard on any of those three items? That'll close the public aspect. Motion, commission members?
I make a motion to approve.
Great. So we got a motion by Miss Harrison, second by Miss Brian Jenkins. All in favor, signify by saying aye. That's six in favor, none opposed. We take four and five together, separate?
Separate, please.
And number four is 1888 Rowlandburg Boulevard, T M S number 3531, 30031, 0.35 acres. Request zoning of G B, it was zone, commercial, commercial community, C C in Charleston County. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, and so this is a parcel, it's the true, truest donut hole you can find, completely surrounded on all sides by city and completely surrounded on all sides by general business. So they had chosen to come into the city. And it makes sense that we would just make this general business as well, and that is our recommendation.
Is the applicant here? Anyone like to be heard on this? Ms. Lembis is second. Ms. Brian Jenkins, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone in opposition? So that's six in favor, none opposed. Number five is 3111, Maybank Highway, 1850 Griffith Lane, 3114 King slash Road, John's Island, T M S number 313 000000064 and 063, approximately 26.1 acres, that's a piece of property. Request zoning conservation, it was zone mixed use, John's Island, Maybank Highway overlay in Charleston County. Mr. Morgan?
So this one is really exciting because this is property that the city has just bought with green belt ponds to be a future public park. As you see on this image here, there are a number of ponds on the site. They're what we call borrow pits that, you know, dirt was mined from those many, many years ago, but they've kind of gone back to a natural edge state. So it creates this beautiful set of lakes here that will be a future city park right in the center of Maybank Highway on John's Island. So we're super excited about that. And we are recommending conservation zoning for it since it's going to be only used for park purposes and should be a great addition to the city here. And just have, it's, it's in our plan as part of the city center, but we're happy to have it become just a preserved green space, obviously. And that is what it will be. This is just the description of the current plan. And here is an image of the property, looks very, very rural when you see it from Maybank Highway. And we have an aerial, I guess we don't have another aerial.
So there's the applicant on this program, and recommend for the, uh, conservation zoning. Anyone like to be heard on this item? Yes, ma'am, come on up, tell us who you are, where you live.
I have the aerial, I need it, as well as a lot of other commercial material. As myself and my community have been working to preserve this property since two thousand and sixteen. My name is Lewis Christina Papaneta.
You got a long name, too?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, good evening, I'm a teacher, and I represent over fifty students on John's Island who have actively participated in the six years that we made a community effort to conserve this property. I also represent my mentor, Mr. Will Saunders, my partner, Willie Hayward Jr., who is a great descendant of the sports parks, O'Ponat Parks and Reverend Robert Parks. In two thousand and sixteen, Mr. Bill Jenkins and Mr. Will Saunders of the Historic Progressive Club notified me that John's Island and local people in general no longer have public access to it. That began a community investment in myself, along with the Bola community, migrant community, farm community of John's Island, to enact a plan to turn this area and property into a public access park for conservancy and a holistic plan to address the community needs of local people. This plan involved five major elements. First is education, for homeschool programs, also after school programs, which John's Island schools that I love, um, but do lack some after school programs, so we were excited to be a part of that and worked closely with the principals of the schools. Um, and also for field trips to all Charleston County schools involved in that program as well. Second was environmental, um, working with neighboring properties for actually protecting endangered species that we were able to identify, and in fact, enacting environmental education from the qualities of this site, primarily water, as well as water. Uh, and the third aspect was the farmers cooperative, um, ensuring that the longevity of our endangered farm culture in decentralized societies. And for culture, giving the Bola community a landing spot for regular event planning and outreach and community work in the very center of one of their beloved scene. And the fitness to honor history, this cannot be understated. In such a historic town, uh, meaning Charleston City, John's Island has also such a rich history, specifically around civil rights movement, and literally people who shaped the equality that moved into this country. We intended to honor and teach and monument this history at this location. In late December of two thousand and nineteen, we spent five and a half years working on this, thirty thousand something dollars going into, you know, promotional materials and outreach, and, uh, over ninety thousand, you know, service hours, things like this, right, have built up over the years. Uh, but in late two thousand and nineteen, um, we were working for our third application for greenbelt funding that involved this, to, to, to spark in this plan. And it was suggested to us by a council member that we reach out to the city, um, the mayor to write us a letter of support. So, we thought, okay, we, we spoke to the mayor before, we gave him help for their support, that makes sense. Well, a homology not to the mayor, rather than giving his letter of support, he decided to duplicate this plan for a park and apply for the exact same funding cycle of greenbelt funding that we were applying for, uh, which had actually never been done in Greenbelt, and they were sort of playing to figure out a new rate to do this. Uh, the city ultimately won, they have, uh, much greater advantages in our small organization, and now it's the property, which we do support in the service force. Uh, but we did plead with the mayor to please include us in our ideas and our programs and all the efforts that we've done within the community. This is such a valuable asset, and when you have community working together and can identify their own needs, it actually worked with the solutions for their needs. But, um, once it was, once he had notified us that he decided to apply for himself, we have heard from everything. Um, so this is simply us coming back again to put on public record today that this property was a community investment by the community for the community. And we believe that the city should honor such deep outreach of communities investing in solutions, and their legacy is better than by the way that they can overcome.
And thank you for being with us, and thank you for the information, that's very wonderful, and I think you have a, Mr. Ruse here, and he has directed asked the mayor to talk about that, and we appreciate your time and your passion about this. Commission mem, has anyone else like to speak here on this? If not, commission members? Questions, comments, or motions? I don't think anyone else would be heard on it, I believe, so. That'll close the public aspect, anyone else like to, is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Ms. Jacobs, move for approval. On Ms. Joy, any other comments, questions, if not, all in favor of the application, signify by saying aye. Anyone in oppositions, that's six in favor, none opposed. Thank you everyone for coming, the only other item that we have, this, this, and I'm going to take a little personal privilege here, we had on the other business discussion, the time limits, the public comments, that I've received from this, um, this Johnson who could be here, and Mr. and Mr. um, the same, who's got delayed in the meeting, they both want to be heard on this. And so what I'd like to do is just move this to the next meeting, because both of them expressed an interest to be heard and talk about this item. And, uh, there's one public comment, and I think there's no objection, I'd like to move this to the next meeting, so that both of those people who wish to be speaking on it can.
Well, I think we can.
I hate to just do it twice, I'd rather just do it once. But we can, if you want to have a comment, that's great.
If my, if my mistake, ask, we usually skip over staff updates at the very beginning of the agenda, and I have asked that we could.
Okay, I apologize, so. But let's go ahead, since we're on that, are y'all okay with, Ms. Harrison, you okay to just hear that next month, when the other commission members could be here?
I mean, I definitely think we can hear it next, I mean, I don't think, I think we can, I think we can still have discussion about it, so that we can contemplate it and provide context.
I was just trying to make sure that the others could hear what we all had to say, maybe both expressed an interest, but whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think, I think more discussion about it is, is beneficial for us to kind of like get the first, get a first ask, at, you know.
Well, go ahead, we'll let you lead, and Ms. Jacobs, if you don't want to start, go ahead.
Just a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Will the one comment that we received be read?
I was going to read it, I was going to read it after the record, um, more when we have it, because I was going to push this off to the next meeting and read it in the record then, but we could.
That's what I was asking, what is it going to be pushed to the next session when we have more discussion?
Yep, and I was going to read that comment into the record as well, and if there's anyone else.
I guess my only comment on this really, and I think this is something that we can kind of all go back and just kind of like look at, is the fact that I don't think it's really about time limits for me. I went to where I, so I forgot it on YouTube, but, um, is that it's not really about time limits. I think for me, it's the fact that when we look at like our other boards and commissions, they've updated their policies and procedures, and as the planning commission, we haven't updated ours since nineteen ninety-nine. And so that's before the advent of Facebook, you know, I don't think I was email, you know, the iPhone was two thousand and eight, you know, so, and then of course, you know, pandemic and Zoom. So I think if we're operating underneath like a nineteen ninety-nine construct, we are really looking at the challenges that have, that have come since in over twenty plus, you know, almost twenty years.
Other comments?
I'd like to echo that, because this discussion for me isn't just about time limits either, it's about having a policy that we all understand, so that the applicant understands it, the public understands it when they speak, the public understands it when they write in, that we have, we, we listen to public comment, but we don't necessarily summarize written comments into the record at the meeting, so. When we got a hundred and fifty comments, well, that was time consuming for those people, that we should have at least maybe made a one minute synthesis of it, photo reference, or, because I don't think coming to the meeting has any real weight when somebody is writing in a comment, I think we should see people writing. So this to me is not about a time limit at the meeting, but as Erica pointed out, we have a, a policy and procedures in this regard, go back to nineteen ninety-nine, and given the fact that we're going to be reviewing Union Pier Peninsula Plan, zoning could rewrite, I think it's really important that we have a, a modern policy about public speaking. And I went and looked at some other, almost everybody else has one, and sometimes are even printed on the agenda for the public, so they know before they come, what's, how our meetings are going to be conducted. And I coincidentally watched the Beaufort County Commission, because they were looking at the, um, cultural protection over Saint Helena Island, which is gotten to be quite a high interest, probably equivalent to some of the high interest we're going to have. They require a sign in, they call the person, they get a three minute time, some people going over, some people going less. They had sixty people sign up, but they had a very structured to their meeting, so it went very, everybody knew what was going to happen. And I think that's going to be very important, when we have re-natured things that will come before us, that are going to have as much weight as those people are concerned on Saint Helena with the cultural protection overlay. I think it just protects all of us to have a policy that we all understand, and the public understands that we use, and since, as Erica pointed out, ours is dated, I just thought it would be time to review what that is. And it's unfortunate it says time limit, because I think it's not just, it's not just time of public speaking, it's the whole picture that we need to think about and address.
And maybe that's my fault, I told staff when they put on the agenda, I wanted it because it seemed like a lot of the issues, every one of these said, limited person here, two minutes, three minutes, and that was my concern, but, Ms. Lampis?
Having been the longest serving, not, I guess the oldest too, um, person on this commission, it has been very obvious to me that we have played a huge role in the public, letting the public voice their concerns to us. Um, we have done everything from ask them to go out in the lobby and discuss it and come back in, and let's rehear it, I mean, y'all have all been around, y'all seen a lot of different ways in which whoever was chairing it, but we have allowed the public to talk. Now, sometimes they talk too long, and sometimes they repeat things over and over and over again, and I think we need to do something about that particular issue. I think some issues are going to be huge, and we're going to have to put a limit on it, like the Union Pier, and those that are opposed to it, those that are for it. And I think for certain projects, when we have a hundred people a year, or, then that's a different set of circumstances than it would be otherwise. Um, I don't want a limit, uh, it, it makes me very nervous, you know, city council has so many items to review, and I understand their limit of three members, but I'll tell you one thing, I don't like it. I don't like seeing that, and I, and I, and it really does make, it doesn't give you a very good feeling. And I do believe that the people that leave here, they may not like how we vote, but they do know that we listen to them. And I think that we should not give them a timeframe, but we should give them parameters in which they need to stay. And, um, and I think that goes with what both Erica and Donna were saying, that, you know, we need to say, okay, this is, we've got a lot of people participating. You asking how many people are going to comment, and you see five hands go up, and we have twenty people talking. And, um, so that's not always, that, they just kind of get caught up in the, their time. So I think that we need to not limit their time, but we need to limit their comments, we need to tell them to join together and, 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 and allow one person to speak for them. I think there are different things we should do, but my concern is I don't want to see a three minute time.
Stop, right.
Or whatever.
Right. I, I would talk. My, my concern came in, I, I had a, a email, Ms. Lassane mailed, um, I have, I consider three mentors on the planning commission. When I first came on, a council member, Evans, before they had dual holders, she was head of the commission, and a city council member, they eliminated that. And then I still call him Mr. Chairman Frank McCann, who was chairman for many, many years, and my other mentor, Ms. Lampis, was. And I reached out to all three of those folks to get input from them, and as Frank, as Evans said, you know, the limited city council, people have always been heard at the planning commission. I know it's not just a matter of limit, and I, I get it, y'all are here, and I'm sorry that shouldn't have been there, but, uh, Frank McCann emailed, said Charlie, as Ms. Lampis said, this has always been, it's called a public hearing, public hearing, so we should hear the public, listen to them. We maybe, he says, you know, we're not usually there till after seven, it's only six now, but he said, we're not usually there till after seven. And people, as, as Ms. Lampis said, will leave here, not always get what they want, but they always felt like they were heard, so, uh, I hear y'all, I think that we need to do a better job of directing people at the beginning and work on that. But I do want to still focus this onto the next meeting, so that Ms. Lassane and Ms. Johnson will have some feedback.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's absolutely fair, I mean, because I think they, I think we are not a full board today, so, so I wouldn't want to make any type of decisions. I think for, you know, having been on the VAR, um, team years ago, and watching that shift, you know, and, and is that, there's a way to narrow, you do want the public to be heard, because, you know, you wouldn't want to try and create a time limit on the situation that we had before, that, which was in James Island, um, what was the name of the? Bee Field, like, I wouldn't want to, you know, you don't necessarily, because there's, you have to, there's a way, you have to articulate all of the, the concerns, because they're so, they're, they're, they're varied. I think sometimes what, what I sense is that, you know, you don't want to necessarily speed it up because you're ready to go home, but also, but be very generous in the very beginning, and I think maybe it's the way we either set the agenda, maybe we should take some of the, like, the re-zonings potentially at the beginning, because you can knock those out. You know, as, as we just saw, well, you know, just, I think maybe it's a way of like looking at how we set our agenda. Um, and, you know, and I think we still give the chair that type of, that discretion over how the meetings run, but at least having some kind of parameters, especially for when these large individual.
No question, we have parameters.
I, I don't know even applicant who didn't talk, talk for five minutes. And get all everything the same.
I think that parameters are like, please do not repeat the same.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But they do, they do.
They, they.
And all you can do is, and, and, and we have to turn him into the mascot, because she's got to stop them.
Right.
And the other parameters are, um, you know, to, what else, um, let's stay on subject. I remember a couple of times where we, we hear about the personality of the applicant as opposed to.
You're going to have that randomly, that.
I know, but I mean, everybody's, if ten people stand up and talk about personality.
Because we do want to get staff updates, I didn't plan to make a decision, and I, as you said, any decisions made anyway?
I think, I think it's just an understanding, I think if we know the game, the rules, but, I mean, I understand the rules, but I think if public understands the rules, when we go into larger meetings, it, it will, I, I think it's only because I, I'm, what's reminiscent is, and I, and it, and I wasn't, I wasn't on, on planning mission, I just know that I had an application that same day, and Sergeant Jasper is that application that I do not want to, I mean, is that hearing? And, but I chaired, but I chaired the hearing for the BAR, and when, in its understanding what those, because that has a limited scope of discussion, and so I think that's my.
I hear you, and that's.
And I think, I think one of the others to discuss is that we value their time, they're making the trip down here, they're driving here, and they're showing up in time, and they need to value our time. We are, you know, we're the same vibe being on this board, and we need to have them appreciate our restraints and our time too. So I think it's a mutual understanding that needs to maybe be clarified, possibly even on an application, um, or, or on the agenda or something.
I think what would be helpful is whatever we decide as a group, that we update our policy, and then we just put it on the agenda, so people that come down here kind of know what the parameters are.
We'll continue this next meeting, when Ms. Lassane and Ms. Johnson could be heard as well, and talk about it then, thank you.
Staff updates? Sure. Um, first off, the zoning ordinance, uh, the contract with our selected consultant, Clarion and Associates, uh, which is one of the national firms that does lots and lots of zoning ordinances, and they also have experience with Norfolk's elevation based zoning ordinance. That is going to council at their next meeting on the twenty-fourth. Uh, selection for the Peninsula Plan is working its way through, uh, legal and contractual issues, and hopefully the following council meeting, it will be coming before council, so hopefully both of those will get started in the next, uh, month or so. Um, also, um, this, um, uh, uh, Jacobs had asked that we get an update on a grant that the city recently was awarded. Um, there was a newspaper article on this recently, some of you may have seen it, but, um, Chloe Stuber was instrumental on this grant in applying for it and. was instrumental on this grant in applying for it and getting it obtained. And she gave me some bullet points, she's at a conference today. But this is for the city of Charleston, in collaboration with the town of Mount Pleasant, Charleston County, and the Innovation Society, applied for and were awarded $75,000 in funding from the National Park Service Underrepresented Communities Grant Program to support community-led historic resource surveying in African-American settlement communities. The city provided a $25,000 match toward the community education outreach. It's a two-year timeframe, it's gonna kick off this winter and spring, and we'll have additional partners that will be assisting and holding information sessions to determine which communities will participate. And the activities will be guided by community priorities, but will be limited to documenting community history. The communities will also draw up what information is used for, it could be documentation per CLOs of local designations, national register nominations, or interpretive signage. And the city will administer the funding, and we're gonna hire a consultant with expertise in historic surveying, engagement expenses, and partner, partners to assist with coordination and outreach. And that's what's going on.
The reason I ask about this was because this was, this got pulled together really fast with a lot of cooperation, even from Mount Pleasant. And it was, it came directly out of recommendations from our city plan, and I think it's just good that the public here, that that city plan just isn't gathering dust on shelf, that there's actually active default engagement happening. It was very exciting for us to get awarded that grant. So I just wanted the public to hear that.
Right.
What was the name of the company that you're talking about that was only, you said?
Clarion and Associates, and there are two or three of these vics in the country, and that's one, they do have subconsultants. Subconsultants include, oh, what's the name of the firm that's out of Charleston? It's our attorneys, two different attorneys. Erica, do you know?
The, the one, I know, I know.
Tyson Smith, Tyson Smith, Smith and I forget who his partner is on that. So Tyson Smith is on it, Dover Colne will be having a role in it as well. And I think they've got one other firm that I'm not as familiar with who are gonna be helping with. And then Robert will be at your next meeting, and he will give a more complete update on the zoning ordinance process, and also on the Peninsula Plan selection and all that. So he's planning to be here at the beginning of the next year.
For the Peninsula Plan though, there's gonna, I mean, that community engagement prep, but there's gonna be, there's gonna be an individual committee, like of, of people from downtown on the, on the Peninsula Plan.
We have not determined that yet, it's gonna depend on what the consultant, how they wanna kind of work things. That was not part of the RFP that we would have that yet. We did have that with the last downtown plan, but that is still to be worked out.
Okay. And so, and what is for the Clarion, how do they see our, I mean, our role is supposed to be active, so how active are we?
So I would imagine they would be involving you all in community meetings, coming through periodic reports, the zoning ordinance again is gonna take two years. So that's gonna be, you know, probably quarterly reports, that kind of thing. We do anticipate that a lot of the work will happen over the next year, but then it may take a while to get everything implemented by team. So, you know, this is gonna be a very busy year for those two projects.
And I would like to add one thing, the reason I ask of Dan, at least, you know, about the question about whether these S T R permits are with main house accessory drawing unit or the accessory unit, is we put a lot of effort, as I was gonna say, into building an ordinance where brand new A D U's cannot be S T R.
And they can, right.
At, at main house. But I'm hearing, at least in the suburbs, that there are a lot of accessory units being built and turning right into S T Rs.
Which is not allowed.
Well, A D U's are.
So if it's new construction.
A D U's are, not A D U's.
A, A D U's are, but you can't use an A D U that's constructed, you know, under the A D U standards as a S T R.
Because there's a difference between the two, and it has to be the stone. And there's a lot of this happening right now, anecdotal. I think that we need to kind of look at how.
Because Lee was here to help answer that, and then that question didn't get asked. But, um, so, so touch base with Lee, because Lee is very.
Well, I've already asked Lee about this, and he, what he has, he has no opinion on this now, because there's nobody keeping the data about the difference between an A U being built and an A D U being built. And they are different by descriptions.
So A D U's a folding, has a stove and everything like that.
And an accessory unit is not, and that there are no accessory units being built and getting permitted for S T Rs because they're not A D U's, and that's what's forbidden in our ordinance and A D U's.
Yeah. I'd say give the addresses to zoning and let them go enforce that, because that sounds like that doesn't meet our ordinance, so.
No, that's what Lee's saying, there's, it does.
He's saying that there's a, there's a black hole in there.
There's a black hole.
He told me that it was very clear, so, but can we get the addresses and I'll work on that?
Yeah, he left, let's ask him that next meeting as well.
Everybody on, it was Beverly Drive in Windermere that's in destruction, because Windermere went, old Windermere alerted me about this, and they actually went to Mayor's Night Inn, and they're very concerned, because it's like the entire neighborhood. And if you walk the greenway, you see this. And then there's this, the people that build these new ones.
He, he seemed to feel that everything that he had heard about was existing ones that may not have been used in the past, that were renovated or something like that, but they had been accessory in the past.
Let's do this, so.
But, yeah.
Let's ask Lee.
I think there's some confusion here, I really do, basically, and I think we need to straighten it out.
Okay. And an email would also be really good, too.
Well, I think Donna has email.
If you forward that to me, I'll make sure we get a full answer on that.
But let's ask him, just to make sure, so next meeting, at the beginning, we'll ask him to address that, and we'll also get this out of the way.
And if, you know, what's interesting is that sometimes I pull up on multiple listing, I'll pull up a site that has like a garage kind of, that's unfinished in the back, and you'll see where it says, you could build an S T R.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that is like, and, and I write down the address, and I write down the zoning, and I call the listing agent, and I inform the listing agent that they need to probably change their, in my last, now, they, you know, some do, some don't. I have no business doing what I'm doing, except for I'm on the planning commission. And I think I have every right to tell them, or I can call the broker in charge, and then, you know, have them.
Or they sell to somebody with one understanding to get sued over if, if people think they can do something, whether they can, so.
Well, I mean, it's wrong information. They did, they did in Canada, but I'm telling you, that's so shocking to me.
Anything else, commission members? If not, thank you.
Do you have a date tonight or something?
No, I'm fine. It's nice, I just won't let you.
He's like.
My tan, my tan's at somebody's 6:20, so it's not too bad. It's five o'clock somewhere.
Sorry, Charlie.
No, no, you're fine.
That's a good one, that's really good one.
Unfortunately, I don't have a date.